Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's January 15, 2020, school committee meeting at 6:02. And at this time, I'd entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategies to be followed in the ongoing and continued litigation.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This requires a roll call vote. Adiós, Mrs. Demos.
Aye.
Mr. Stadman.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. We will reconvene for our budget workshop at 6:30 PM. Thank you very much. We'd like to reconvene the January 15, 2020, school committee meeting at 6:34. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our business manager, Mr. Dave Libby, for our first budget workshop.
Thank you, Chairman. Welcome to the FY21 Tewksbury Public Schools' first session of our budget workshop. We take this at a very elementary level to start off with, kind of delve into a little more detail as we go through future workshops, but this first one is very introductory in nature, and then we try to get into some more detail as we get down the road here through this process. So I'd like to start with our district strategy that we try to keep in mind as we go through this process and develop our budget and allocate resources for our school budget for next year. So the Tewksbury Public Schools community believes that our educational program will encompass a 21st-century teaching and learning approach that promotes consistent growth among our students and staff to achieve academic, social, and emotional success for all students. A theory of action that goes along with that district strategy, if the Tewksbury Public Schools prioritizes a growth mindset amongst all stakeholders while providing quality professional development and a professional culture grounded in collaboration, then all students will experience innovative, student-centered instruction prioritizing positive outcomes. That's the sort of the mission of the district that we've worked with our administrative team, school committee to develop, and that's, we'd like to keep that in the forefront as we go through allocating resources to the school department. So the school department budget consists of four major parts, three of which are managed by the schools. Solely salary, which is just wages paid to employees. We have about 950, over 950 individuals who help us run this school department, about 450 full-time employees and 500 part-time people ranging from lunch monitors, coaches, part-time folks who work at our athletic events, a lot of different folks in the mix in the salary area. Operating is the second section of our budget. It's all other costs that are associated with the normal operation of our facilities, utilities, supplies and materials, maintenance costs, transportation, tuition, special education services are some of those items that land in our operating budget. And we have a capital outlay budget, which are for major projects with a longer life expectancy, and we try to put those into our capital outlay area. Our fourth section of the budget is our fixed costs, which are managed and shared with the town. Those are things like health insurance and benefits, retirement, and debt service that we don't have a lot of control over, but we do get some say in how those costs are allocated to us, and we are responsible for those costs to the town. We'll focus today mainly when we talk about the school budget. We're talking about the first three areas, salary, operating, and capital outlay. The fixed costs kind of are what they are for the most part, but when we talk about school budget, we generally talk about the top three areas there. The areas of focus that we kept in mind as we met with building administrators and department heads were in the areas of personnel. We're always mindful of class size. We watch and assess our class sizes. We try to keep them equitable among schools and grade levels wherever we possibly can. In fact, during this year that we're in now, we were able to reduce teacher count at the middle school by half a team based on a smaller population of students moving into the seventh grade. So that's reflected in this year's, in next year's FY21 budget. Special education service delivery is another area we look at with regards to personnel, whether we want to provide those services through employees or through contracted services, whichever means would be best to provide those services for students. Specialists is an area we always look at in the budget as far as personnel goes. Art, music, PE, tech, and STEM, those were restructured in FY20, so we'll be watching those areas at our K-4 elementary schools especially and seeing how those, that restructuring works in delivering those types of curriculum to our students. We ran a summer K-4 clerical pilot in FY20. Prior to that, we had no secretarial coverage in our K-4 buildings. We piloted a part-time position three or four days a week, depending on where we could get folks in the building. Reports back from principals and secretaries were very positive that it had a good impact on the startup of the school year when students returned in September. So we plan to continue that for FY21, which will be the summer that's coming up. And lastly, in the area of personnel, in conjunction with the Tewksbury Police Department, the FY21 budget includes a third resource officer for our elementary schools and also will allow us to increase our capacity for student engagement, social and emotional support services throughout our district. So a third resource officer is part of this budget presentation. In the areas of technology, device maintenance and replacement is a big, always a big factor for those folks. The tech department has produced a go-forward technology replacement plan based on the estimated life expectancy of all of our devices that we manage in the district. Also working on monitoring systems, which are systems that can let us know if things are breaking before they break. Sending texts or emails to our staff, you know, at 2:00 in the morning if the internet goes down, so we don't have to wait till, you know, people show up at work to find out that the internet isn't working. So things like that are something the technology folks are looking into. And also, our printing solutions, we want to move towards using less paper in the district, more digital files going to help us with storage, and just paper costs are something we could look at eliminating as we move to less paper in the district. In the area of building improvements, just general upkeep of our older buildings, trying to keep up with the maintenance on those so that there are suitable spaces for learning. Security, we'll plan some continued improvements in that area. We've made a lot of strides in recent years on building security. Our building systems, we're looking for improvements on those to create efficiencies and cost savings. And all of our schools are now, have a STEM space. We're now looking for maker spaces as well, which allow for new learning experiences for our student population. And we need to get those places outfitted with supplies, materials, and equipment that they need to do that. Overall, in those three areas of our budget, the anticipated or requested increase is 2.94%. If you consider our fixed costs, which have gone down, which are projected to go down slightly in FY21, it's a 2% increase that we're requesting. We work with the town manager closely during this process. He develops a townwide budget, which accounts for all new revenues and makes his recommendation. Then we circle back with our staff, administrators, building-level folks, and identify how and if we can fit within that town manager's figure. And so far, to this point, we are on target. Within that budget, salary is 70% of our school budget. This slide just shows the contractual increases that we're bound to for either a percentage increase to base salaries or step increases as folks move through our salary tables and longevity increases that folks are entitled to per our collective bargaining agreements, all of which are in place for FY21. They are set to expire at the end of FY21, so next year will be a negotiating year for our bargaining units as well as the town. Within that 70%, kind of broke down how that 70% salary is allocated amongst our groups. Teachers are, of course, the largest group, at 68% of the 70% of our salary budget. We did the same with operating, kind of put it into buckets so that we could see where, you could see where a majority of our operating budget lies. Most of our larger numbers are in transportation and tuition, and that operating piece represents 28% of our total budget. The last piece, capital outlays, a smaller portion, is 2% of the school budget, but we recognize the need to maintain our buildings and continue to advance our technology. We also have been planning an annual textbook upgrade for the past several years in our budget in this area, where we dedicate the $250,000 to keep our textbooks up to date for our students. The other 600 for next year will be to-be-determined projects based on the prioritization of our projects list, which is on our next slide. Several projects we've been working with, with school-level personnel and our maintenance and technology people are listed on this page, as well as sort of the progress and anticipated date, which we'd like to get them done. This list is ever-changing based on needs. It's also based on estimates and available resources that come to us. Sometimes we are fortunate enough to receive one-time funds at town meetings, and some of these projects get funded that way. Some of them get funded within our budget as well. So we also have quite a few projects at the Doing and the Heathbrook School, which are in the hands of our architect and design team that has partnered with the town as a resource to give us estimates and design work on major projects that are kind of in a larger scope than we're able to get done in-house. So also including some, a list of some of the projects we've completed over the past four years. This list of, this slide is projects we completed in 2017. This list is 2018. Most of these improvements are in the area of school security or general maintenance for the, for the schools. We've made some improvements in our systems and controls at our schools already, and we'd like to continue that effort. We've done some major work on our boiler systems, which used to run our entire, our boiler system ran our hot water and our heat. We've got those separated now at the Heathbrook and the Doing schools, so when the weather changes in May, we can shut down those major boilers and just run a smaller system to provide hot water to our restrooms and kitchen areas and wherever hot water is needed in the building. But we feel that's going to be a significant savings for our fuel consumption, as well as possibly providing some cooling solutions in our, in our K-4 elementary buildings. In these areas, in this area also, we've been able to make some audiovisual improvements in four of our K-4, four of our schools, actually, we did the Ryan School as well, to provide better resources for the school-wide assemblies and presentations and things like that in our school buildings. And the last area that I would say most of these projects fall into would be a technology overhaul, where we've restructured the backbone of our technology, our internet wireless service in our school buildings. We invested quite a bit of money in that in last year's budget. Most of those projects are complete now and are proving to be providing results, which are shown here on this slide. So according to the Education Superhighway website, which uses E-Rate data to analyze public entity technology, the Tewksbury Public Schools' internet speed and bandwidth is at recommended levels, and our cost is at the lowest megabyte per second in the area at 23 cents. Nobody knows what megabyte per second mean, but it sounds like we're on the right track. We used to be a yellow dot on this map in the past. We're now the dark green, which is the optimal speed, and we're at 23 cents per megabyte per second. So our tech folks are really doing their job, and that's something that impacts learning and teaching in the classroom directly. You know, it's hard for teachers to commit to, you know, going to technology-based learning when the technology wasn't always working. So it was a barrier in the past. Now, the reporting we're getting back from the schools is that the internet is much more reliable, faster, just overall better than it used to be. So good work by those guys in that area. We do have 62 separate funds that we manage in the budget in the business office, grant and revolving accounts. We had 89 last year. Several are, were inactive from past activities or grant opportunities that have expired. So we're, we'll continue to assess and trim that down if we can during this school year. All of these funds have a specific purpose. The money that comes into those funds must be spent on expenses related to the purpose of the fund. Several of these funds we use in our sort of annual operation, if you will. Circuit Breaker being the biggest. That's a reimbursement from the state for special education expenses, and we use that to offset generally special ed tuition. Title I preschool revolving and special ed 240 are areas where we use those grant funds to fund some of our staff members. And our athletic fees is something we've used to offset athletic transportation costs. That is a necessary cost of running an athletic program, but those fees have gone pretty much directly to that cost for transportation for athletics. So grant funding that we have available, this is the FY20 look at things. I know we're talking about FY21 budget, but those numbers aren't available yet, so we generally look at what we have this year and sort of assume that that will be the same level of funding we receive next year. Just to call your attention to a couple areas that are significant, the 21st Century After-School Learning Grant for $175,000 is in year two right now. That's a three-year program that provides after-school and summer instructional assistance for folks at the Doing School. Another major jump that we received this year was in Title I funding. Title I funding is a formula-based program, which is tied to free and reduced lunch eligibility, and Tewksbury always seems to be right around that threshold that we're either, we get a bump at a certain percentage and we're always slightly below it or slightly above it. So that kind of leads to those big swings in Title I funding, and we happen to be on a, on a high swing right now, at least in FY20. But we'll be watching that as we move into next year as well. So this is what our overall budget would look like if we were at town meeting today with all of our fixed costs identified. This is what it looks like generally at town meeting, what would get voted on at town meeting floor. You can see the 2% increase overall in our budget. Next steps, we'll continue discussions with community members, town officials, elected officials, teachers, parents, and students, and adjust our budget as needed. Sometimes and quite often is likely that that movement will lead to some movement within our budget between the categories, salaries and operating and capital outlay. Sometimes we find out information on our fixed costs too, that have improved or gotten worse, and we have to make adjustments as necessary. But the bottom line, $68 million budget is where we're likely to be at the end of the day for FY21. That concludes our budget workshop. If there are any questions or comments, take those.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. I'd like to open it up to the board for any questions or comments.
An amber alert. Sorry about that. I did have a quick question, Keith. Go back a couple pages. Should have, I should have marked it. So under the operating budget, the tuition line, is that Shaw Tech collaborate?
It's, yeah, collaboratives. We have some students that we send to private school out-of-district placements. It's in the area of special ed, though.
Those would all be special education tuitions. The Shaw Tech assessment, Essex Tech assessment would come off on the front end as a relationship back to the town.
Okay.
That does not impact our budget specifically, nor does charter schools.
So the special ed services are...
It would be special education tuitions to either collaborative schools, public special education placements, or private special education placements.
So then the line that's special ed services, that's in district?
Could be a combination. It might be physical therapy, occupational therapy, clinical evaluations, all kinds of things. So probably predominantly in the district, but students outside the district may also receive those services as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. Do you want to say, obviously, this big thing, and then you boil it down to something like this. But I do appreciate doing the capital projects, the tweak that you made, and I know you will be in contact with more and going back and forth over the next two months, so. But like I said, I appreciate you tweaking the CapEx to a more easier-to-read for myself.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Libby and his team at Central Office just doing outstanding job every day, and I think what Mr. Libby brings to this work is the ability to take the financial issues that the district faces every day, and Mr. Libby is able to actually look at that through a lens of instructional capacity and what's best for kids every day. And I don't think you find that in business managers in school districts too often. The other piece that I think that he is exceptional at, he talked a little bit about the technology department and a little bit about maintenance. These are both pieces that he has a strong presence in, and both of those departments have been revamped over the past couple of years, streamlined, more cost-effective. But yes, in both of those areas, we are producing greater work and having greater results for the teachers in the classrooms and for the students. And it's those pieces kind of behind the scenes on the budget that I think Mr. Libby excels at every day. But also, Mr. Libby and I talk about this budget every day. So there's not a day that goes by that we aren't in some kind of conversation about how this budget works, and it does become this moving piece. But we certainly welcome the public, the committee, to really, you know, push some of the discussions in this because all those help us, and we want to make sure the expenditures that the town is working with us on, and again, hats off to Mr. Montori at Town Hall, who's just exceptional to work with, very clear. You know, we want to make sure that this budget and every budget we do is having the best impact for students every year. So, and I think we couldn't have a better person than Mr. Libby kind of leading that operation.
I just had a question. You mentioned a resource officer for elementary. Where would you envision that being housed? Is it just one for the four schools? Are we talking K-5, K-4?
Right. So ideally, what we had programmed in long-term, we have been talking about an additional resource officer for the past few years. It kind of came more realistic as we started the elementary building project and actually having a space available in the new building for the resource officer. I think the conversation escalated to our pleasurable surprise here a little bit more this year. So likely, we would house until the new building is open, likely in the Ryan, but no final decisions have been made. But again, part of this piece is where they may set up an office or where their vehicle may be parked at any certain time shouldn't have impact on what students they're servicing throughout the district on every day.
That was more my clarification. Will all K-6s have ability to access?
They will, and there's a curriculum piece that goes with this. There's a support piece, a couple, the current housing of the school resource officer at the high school and at the Wynn Middle School, both have connectivity into our security camera system. So they're able, even if they're at those two locations, to monitor all the other locations in the district from that location. But we do believe with three officers and a potential less schools in two years, that we should have an ability to have them equally distributed for services for all the schools. You know, and sometimes, most people implement with a priority at the high school and kind of goes downward, but I think this would allow us to increase the contact with students, particularly at the elementary level, whether that's curriculum-based, observation, being there, whatever the case may be.
Right. No, I just think it's an important piece of the puzzle there, that they're all, it's easily accessible to all the students. You also mentioned that the summer clerical help, will that be at all the buildings?
Yeah.
It said you piloted. Was it K-12? Is it...
We already had 12-month secretaries at the Ryan, Wynn, and High School, so it was only, it was sort of a K-4 problem.
Yep.
So we're going to continue that.
Each one of those buildings? Okay. And I will just continue to email you my questions as they come up. Thank you for answering them in a prompt manner. Thank you for answering them in a prompt manner. I appreciate your time.
Sure.
Great. And just a comment for the public. If anyone does have any questions regarding the budget, this is a public process. So please feel free to email myself or Mr. Malone if you have any questions moving forward. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank not only Mr. Libby and Mr. Malone and our school staff and the town manager, but also, very importantly, our colleagues on the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee members who continue to make educational priority in this town. So thank you very much, Mr. Libby, and thanks to all of those that are getting this budget together for us. All right. With that being said, I'd like to reconvene our regular school committee meeting for January 15th, 2020, at 7:03 PM. At this time, I would ask that everyone bow their heads as we observe a moment of silence for a longtime school employee who has recently passed, Mr. Thomas Gilbreath, who retired in 2014 and spent 39 years here in the district, 10 years as a custodian and 29 in maintenance. Thank you. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Gilbreath family and all his friends. All right. The January 15th, 2020 school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. Seeing none, I would like to ask Mr. Shane Ewell, if I can put him on the SWAT, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, Mr. Ewell. Moving on to our recognitions this evening, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Malone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have some outstanding recognitions this evening, and we're going to start out with two what are categorized as athletic recognitions, but I think that does a complete disservice to the students we're talking about. We're going to talk about two students who are just outstanding community members, outstanding representatives of this district. They both happen to be good athletes. If we could recognize for just outstanding people, these two would be on top of the list. The first student we're going to have come up is Ms. Michaela Page. Michaela, why don't you come on? And Mr. Drewin, if you can join her. And Ms. Vogel, can we have you come up as well, please? And yes, if I'm the black dog. Michaela, technically, I think is the third-ranking member of the school committee, if we run by attendance, the amount of times she's been here. But Michaela is just one of those students who quietly excels at almost everything she does. It happens to be cross-country this fall. But her story is amazing. What's more amazing is the story that she's going to tell over time. She's an excellent, excellent athlete, an outstanding student, but even a better citizen. Mr. Drewin, if you could talk a little bit about her cross-country success?
Yeah, she's, well, start with, she was, and I know we haven't had a chance to get her here for this, but she was named the Gatorade Runner of the Year in Massachusetts for outdoor track this past spring. Cross-country, she was undefeated in dual meets. She finished fourth in the Division III meet. She was 10th in the All-State meet. She just, you know, this past winter, she has the number-one ranked time in the country in the 600. You guys might as well just carve a little note next to this, the summer, and then put her right up there because she's just going to keep coming every time through. She's a pleasure to have, and she's a, everything that we're looking for here at Tewksbury High, she's great, you know? So she had the, I think it was number two in the country last year in the 600. She has the New England record, the New England all-time record, the Mass all-time record. I sat down with Michaela the other day. We talked about different schools she was looking at. It's an impressive, impressive list. So Princeton and Virginia and just different schools, Villanover, great schools. So she's, she's everything she's cracked up to be. So I think you guys have had her a million times, and you'll have her a bunch more. So she's great.
Would you like to join? I know you don't like this. I know.
Yeah. I got to put on, I got to put on my glasses.
Pretty cute, too. We got to talk about that.
All right. So getting old. This is my first time getting to recognize Michaela here, but I have had the pleasure of watching her run. It's a pretty special thing to see what she does. So this resolution, Michaela Page, has been named the 2019 and '20 Boston Globe and Boston Herald All-Scholastic for her outstanding performance on the Tewksbury Memorial High School Girls Cross-Country Team. And Michaela is a junior at Tewksbury Memorial High School, competing on both the girls' indoor and outdoor tracks, track, and also the girls' cross-country team. And Michaela finished fourth in Eastern Mass Division III, 10th in All-States, and undefeated in dual meets. And Michaela has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to herself, to her parents, family, the Tewksbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tewksbury. So therefore, be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Michaela Page.
Jason, were you able to get a picture?
Oh, I didn't wait.
Jason, did you get, were you able to?
Can you get one?
Okay. Why don't we put you...
Ready to go, Dad? And we're going to take your boot on the sky.
Mr. Chairman, our second recognition is Mr. Shane Ewell. Shane, if you can come on up and join Mr. Drewin and Ms. Vogel. And once again, if we could give our awards for character and role models, that would probably be more appropriate this evening. But Shane's an outstanding young man. You know, I see him involved in almost everything around this school, you know, from unified basketball to all of the kinds of things. He's a leader. Had a great season this year, and football really shined. Has a bit of an overzealous and over-demanding coach, but I guess he has a very understanding father, so it all works out in the end. But he's just one of those people here in Tewksbury we should all be proud of. So, Mr. Drewin, if you want to talk a little bit more about football?
I'd like to ask Brian and Mary to come up, if you could. Take a picture with Shane. Stop pouting back there, let's go. Shane, Shane's, you know, all kinds of records here for receptions and set the single-season reception record, set the career reception record. 30 touchdowns in his career, I think five were on kick returns. You know, my heart kind of broke for him. Had a couple injuries this year, and the way he started the first couple games, and then he got injured and tried to play through it at the end, just shows his character and his courage. He, you're right on the money with the best buddies in the unified sports and, you know, basketball and different things that he does, track. He's a role model here and a great young man and every, you know, both Shane and Michaela are two kids that we can be extremely proud of. Happy for Shane, and he's still going through the process of where we're going to go to school and trying to hammer that out, and I'm sure he'll make a great choice. So he's been a pleasure to be his athletic director and watch him play and compete, and the impact that he made on the football field was tremendous for us, and the impact that he made in the locker room and keeping everybody organized and as a captain and a leader was second to none. So he's been a pleasure to have here. We'll wrap up Shane and then a couple other things I got for you.
Well, I have the pleasure, Shane, of presenting you the recognition tonight. The resolution of recognition, whereas Shane Ewell has been named 2019, 2020 Boston Globe and Boston Herald All-Scholastic for his outstanding performance on the Tewksbury Memorial High School Redman Football Team. And whereas Shane is a senior at Tewksbury Memorial High School and is the all-time leading receiver in receptions in the football program, he scored 30 touchdowns in his career, 24 receiving, and six on special teams. And whereas Shane was chosen the team MVP, Merrimack Valley Conference II MVP, and selected to the MIAA State All-Star Team. And whereas Shane Ewell has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to himself, to his parents, to his family, and to Tewksbury Memorial High School and the town of Tewksbury, now therefore be resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Shane Ewell.
Congratulations, Shane. I think that holds my pledge. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Shane.
I think Jason will take a picture of you and your mom and dad. Jason, would you like the family to send? Okay.
Send the dad over, not the coach. Send the dad over, not the coach. He smiles more.
He's been smiling this one. Very nice.
Mr. Malone, while we have Brian here, he was very well-recognized. He was named the head coach of the Shriners game, Shriners football game. So I would hope that Shane's athletic ability and what he's done in the football field would get him in the Shriners game. I would hope it wouldn't have to be Dad pulling some strings to get him on the roster, but I got a feeling that Shane's going to be able to add maybe the Shriners game to his resume as well, too. So Brian was named the head coach, and hopefully Shane would play in that game. And also, Sarah Oteri, yesterday was named the National Federation of High Schools Massachusetts Hockey Coach of the Year. So, good stuff. Good stuff.
Congratulations. Finally, Mr. Chair, we have a recognition of the Tewksbury Memorial High School DECA organization, and we have several representatives here, including their advisor, Mr. Jim Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, if you could bring your students on up and join Ms. Vogel right up front. And, Mr. Chairman, and possibly Mr. Sullivan might be able to describe a little bit of DECA's mission, but some of this goes beyond that, and you're going to hear about a little bit of an event that DECA regularly does, but it creates the character in students that we certainly want to celebrate, and it's adults like Mr. Sullivan that help us do that. But Ms. Vogel, if you could talk a little bit more about DECA in the fashion show?
Sure. So we're missing Tori Schill tonight. She's on the ice, playing a game. So Tori, Colby, and Rebecca were this year's chairs of the DECA Fashion Show, which has been taking place for approximately 10 years at TMHS. And all the funds that are raised from the fashion show is donated to Dana Farber Cancer Institute for the Megan McCarthy Fund. So in the last 10 years, I think Colby told me, it's around $90,000 that has been donated to Dana Farber. So it's a wonderful opportunity for students who have been a part of the DECA club, some of them for all four years, to really take on a tremendous task, leadership opportunity to organize, organizing their peers, organizing adults, in order to pull off such an amazing fundraising event. So this is why we ask that they come this evening to be recognized for those tremendous efforts.
Okay. So, all right, so this resolution recognition, whereas TMHS DECA members participate in community service events, fundraisers and compete in a business-related annual district conference under the direction of James Sullivan, DECA advisor, and whereas Mr. Sullivan has been the DECA advisor for just 20 years, leading the students in competitions and supporting their fundraising events. And whereas co-presidents Colby Brown, Rebecca DiFrancesco, and senior Victoria Schily organized the 10th Annual Megan McCarthy Fashion Show, performed on November 20th, 2019, in the Christine McGrath Performing Arts Center. And whereas, under advisement of Mr. Sullivan, Colby, Rebecca, Tori, participants, volunteers, and supporters joined together for an outstanding memorial fashion show in memory of Megan McCarthy, a former TMHS student, raising close to $17,000. Proceeds from the fashion show are donated to the Megan McCarthy Research Fund at the Dana Farber Cancer Institute. And whereas, Colby, Rebecca, and Tori have brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to themselves and their parents and family, to Tewksbury Memorial High School and to the town of Tewksbury, now therefore be resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Colby Brown, Rebecca DiFrancesco, Victoria Schily, and advisor Jim Sullivan. Good job. Congratulations, Shane.
Do you want to get into the picture? Come on.
Mr. Malone, just somewhat briefly, which isn't not... Tori, Rebecca, and Colby took this assignment on last day when we returned from our international conference. This is something that the three of them worked with managers from other stores, from corporations, from major corporations, TJX, Marshall, to local businesses, and they were able to get those businesses to be involved with us. Probably the bigger task that they took on was in getting 75 or so students from Tewksbury Memorial High School that really deserved to be honored and recognized as well, people like Jack Statman, people like Mahir Baghul, who was in our DECA program. Students are required to raise a minimum of $50 to be in the show. They go out, they ask people for sponsors. My son hit up my brother, my brother's daughter hit up me, you know, the grandparents got hit both ways. But some kids really take that on in a significant way. Colby went out and single-handedly raised over $1,000 on his own, when $50 was the minimum. Rebecca raised over $900 on her own. Going back to Mahir, he refuses to walk in the show because he's a little stage fright. He went out and raised $450 and didn't even walk in the show. He raised $150 to help the cause, to come and volunteer. So we had 70-something of those kids that raised money from $50 to $1,092 in range to be part of this, to be part of something bigger, to be part of something that's been part of this school for 11 years, when, you know, we did it 11, we missed one unfortunately. Megan, we're coming up on the 10th anniversary of her passing, which will be on the 19th of this month. And so this is something special to me, but to them as well. So we appreciate you recognizing them. I don't want it to go past the boards that it's a group effort, and these students, and specifically, we'll tell you the same thing. They led it, but it was because of all of them, and it was because of their leadership. So I wanted to make that known as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Malone, I'd also like to add, these students very humbly won the states last year in DECA, and actually, is it Tori she goes by? Tori's a two-time state champ last year. She won on the Division I Ice Hockey Team and also won in the DECA. So they're not only fantastic advocates of what the best that we have in Tewksbury, they're state champs, in my opinion. We were very lucky, very fortunate this year. All the kids in DECA, 31, will be competing in a week or two, Coach?
At the end of February.
At the end of February, we'll be sending 31 students down to compete in the states in DECA, and here's one group last year that went down and took first place. So congratulations on your state championship.
Jason, give them a sign. Smile at the camera.
I tried to get them, they said no.
I tried to get them, they said no.
All right. All right, thank you again for all coming this evening. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Jack Stadman for our student representative report, please.
Thank you, sir. Our clubs have been very busy with the new year. This price for this year's yearbook is still $70, although it is pretty late to buy it, they still recommend you do buy a yearbook. The yearbook is 50% complete, and they're very happy to announce that. The TMHS Drama Company has started their rehearsals of their winter performance of Almost Maine, and as well as their spring performance of Cinderella. Cinderella is the musical, and Almost Maine is just the straight acting. DECA students recently competed in their annual district competition. Out of the 50 or so students, they'll be bringing 31 to the state competition. She's the First is now selling fudge by the eight-ounce package for only $9, and it will be supporting women who are going to college that can't afford college. The GSA is selling t-shirts to raise money for future club events, such as poster-making, community outreach, et cetera. The Academic Decathlon are studying up for their regionals that will take place on February 1st. SAD Club is preparing for their latest poster conference with the theme of Dude Be Nice. The math team will be competing in their fourth meet of the year, which will be on Thursday versus Westford Academy. The Winter Track has been training their members on and off during the week as they prepare for upcoming competitions. The Morning Update Crew urges all teachers and students to watch the Morning Update for daily updates on school life and important schedule changes, such as the lunch schedule change of Semester Two. And all clubs participated in Principal's Day where they brought cards and gifts for Ms. Vogel. That's it.
Great, I think you missed the Stadman. Over and along, I'd like to ask Superintendent Malone to lead us in the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we have a presentation by our esports team. I'd like Mr. Drewin and Coach come on up, and this is a little bit unique, this is a club, which typically does not, in its existence, come up in front of the school committee, but we thought this was a little bit important, and I think you'll see some of the reasons why Mr. Drewin's involved in this as well, but when you're developing something like esports, you need a coach with a name that's gonna sing. And I think when you have a coach by the name of Sanford Arbogast, that really, that gets you off on the right foot right there. So with that, Mr. Drewin, if you can let the school committee a little bit about what they're gonna hear about.
The MIAA, two years ago, decided that they were gonna sponsor esports, or people going to game, okay? There is currently 25 high schools in Massachusetts that have. In the Merrimack Valley, Lowell has a team, Andover has a team, and Chelmsford is in the same, I would call it the same situation that we're trying to get ours off the ground. So we would be the fourth team, us and Chelmsford, and the three and four in Merrimack Valley. There are currently 25 schools in the state that have. Mr. Arbogast approached, myself and Mrs. Vogel, regarding the interest that he had from students, wanted to start a team. We spoke to Mr. Stamp and the IT Department. He had his guys come over and look at our, Mr. Arbogast's classroom, to make sure that we could support the games safely and securely, because, you know, obviously it's computers being at the school, so we want to make sure everything will be secure and safe. And the IT Department has created some paths, I don't want to be too technical, but they've created a couple paths that make it work for us and keep it secure for us. At this point, we would like to try to do this at the club level, which would still allow us to compete in any kind of state tournament with the MIAA, with what on the objectives, or compete in the state championship. But at this point, Mr. Arbogast has done the research with the company, he's done the research with the game, they would be playing. At this point, it looks like the one game, League of Legends, is the game that most schools play. So I'm gonna turn it over to him, and let him kind of take you through a brief presentation so you guys have an idea of what's going on.
So, I'm sure none of you have heard of esports. I want you to know, I had never heard of esports either. Okay, I teach here at Tewksbury High School as the computer teacher, so that's why my classroom makes sense to house it. Last year, I was flipping through the channels and I came across these guys playing video games, and I was like, hmm, that's interesting. I wonder if they do it at the high school level? And the next day in the Lowell Sun, there was an article about Shawshank Tech having an esports team, so I was like, that's interesting. And I asked my gaming class what they thought of it, and a few of them were like, yeah, we know about esports. And this year, five of them came to me and said, are we gonna do esports? I was like, I don't know, I don't know how to start it. So I asked Principal Vogel and Ronnie, and they said, well, let's find out about it. So what is esports? It's basically playing video games, okay? Which seems silly, but it allows students to compete, you know, and it attracts students who aren't typically interested in sports. They're going, here, they're gonna be playing a multiplayer game where they work together in a team of five to defeat the other team, the other school, and it's growing. This I found quite interesting. League of Legends had 100 million people watch the opening series, which was more than the Super Bowl last year. So it is actually, when, if you put it on the list, it's the sixth-most popular sport in the world, behind soccer, cricket, and field hockey, which are all things that I also thought was very interesting. And it's also being considered for the 2024 Olympics. So it's really, really taking off really fast. Why? Well, it allows students to participate in sports that they may not normally do. It's also, there's no gender requirement, there's no physical capability, so anybody can, who considers a computer for 40 minutes can play and compete. There's no long-term harm, which is great, because nobody's, you might get some carpal tunnel, I guess. It builds community, because again, if we're trying to get students to be part of the school and be involved, and we're trying to get, this is gonna attract students who aren't typically involved. It's STEM, you know, it is computers, they do have to think statistically, they're doing studies, they focus, look at the games, look at the stats, replan, just like you do in basketball and football. They actually train, which is amazing to me, the people who play this professionally have trainers and dieticians, and it's nuts. Like, the background is insane what they go through, because they're spending hours and hours and hours sitting at a computer, so they need to be able to be active. They have Stairmasters and ellipticals going on, it's wild what happens at these sports teams, and there's actually followers. And it's conceptual thinking, teamwork, sportsmanship, things again, that students who are interested in gaming may not participate in, so. They're gonna be playing League of Legends, which is, as I said, a five-on-five, it's a big arena that they play in, they have to decide which paths they're gonna take, they have to attack a tower, there's little minions, so it's not a first-person shooter, so that's one of the things we wanted to avoid, which are some of the other ones. The other sport, the other team game that they have at this system is called Rocket League, which is basically soccer in cars, for a three-on-three, so. But League of Legends is a five-player, they recommend two alternates, so we should have seven players for a team, seven players a minimum, but if I have 10 people, I can have two teams, you know, and we can have more than one team. Shrewsbury actually has three teams competing this fall. They're 15-to-40-minute games, as you can see, there's a, there's gonna be a way to draw on this, I don't know. We have a stadium, which they go into, there's multiple paths that they can attack, they have to basically destroy your opponent's base. Also, there are college scholarships. 200 schools have scholarships. The New York, NYU gives a full scholarship for esports. That includes books and housing. I, again, I was befuddled, this is a video of 180 schools that offer scholarships. These are all the schools in Massachusetts and New England that have scholarships for esports. Becker also has an esports degree, where you can learn to build games as well as manage teams. So lots of interesting things are going on outside of just playing the games. And they have two seasons, there's two major companies, PlayVS and High School Esports League. We're gonna be focusing on PlayVS because they're actually the larger one, and they only have the non-shooter games. They have two seasons, the fall and the spring. The spring is actually, registration ends on February 14th, so I'm hoping to get started so we can actually be part of the spring season. And, you know, here's the thing, the February 14th is the deadline to sign up, and the regular season starts on the 17th. Then they'll be, we'll play on Tuesdays for League of Legends, and if we have interest for Rocket League, we would play Thursdays. The cost to join PlayVS is $64 a student, and that's it. You know, that's all they charge. And they have, I was talking to them, they also have grants for students who are on free lunch, so that allows them to get free passes for, we can get free passes for students who are on free lunch, who can't afford, even the, since this is not an sport, it would only be the $50 fee, but so they would actually grant us a free pass for, if we had a student who was financially incapable of paying for that. And I was just interested to see what was going on, since I knew they were playing right now, they're in the finals right now for their, oh, I wish I could have, I don't know if I can log in, because I don't remember my password. But there, I looked here, Shrewsbury has won every championship so far, and they are in the semifinals, which happened yesterday, and they won again, so they are heading towards the finals, which, you know, will be happening soon. So that's the biggest competition. They, like I said, they have, there's a bunch of schools that have esports in our state, because we only play against student, against schools in our state. It's nationwide, but they, each one is its own thing, so we have Acton, Boxborough, Agawam, Andover, Archbishop Williams, Bartlett, Junior/Senior Bishop Stang, Blackstone Valley, Bristol, Cape Cod, Granby, Innovation Academy, which is also, as we know, a local school, Medfield, Med Milford, Monticic, Natick, Newton South, Oliver, Shawshank, Shrewsbury, as I said, has three teams, and if, every time you have, this is just for League of Legends, Sutton, Tantasca, McDuffie School, Walpole, and Wayland. So these are the state schools that we would be competing against, so that's, give you those questions.
Great, thank you.
I'm as amazed as you are.
Is anyone on the list a club as well, or do they convert over to...
I think, I was talking to some people, it's kind of in the middle, it's this gray area, there's some schools are looking at it as a varsity sport, some are looking at it as a team, as a, as a, as a club, and it just depends, I think, how big a growth they're gonna have, because they usually will put these on, suggest, using Twitch to actually show the games live, there's, they use Twitter feeds, they're using lots of technology, so even students who aren't necessarily playing are being a part of the whole thing, they're filming stuff, they're, they're watching everything and being involved in the game broadcasting and everything, so it's kind of, I called Andover and asked, well, how do you do this? And they said, well, we show it on our TVs in school, so in the cafeteria, it's running live if the kids are around, so they can actually see it. And I was just like, do people stay? And he's like, yeah, people actually sit and watch the games. So it does have, it draws a crowd as well, so it's very interesting, all the things that are happening.
Yes. Burling High School, they took a small classroom and they made it into their, like...
Lair.
Esports stadium. They, they made like their own, it's crazy, they have couches and TVs and gaming chairs and it's, it's grown, it is grown.
Yeah, in Japan, they actually have an entire college set up for esports, so it's not just a degree, like they've set up lounge, like it's a whole stadium, they've, the Asian community has truly embraced esports, and that's where the large growth is happening. So, you know, China and Japan and Singapore and Vietnam and South Korea, so, but it's spreading throughout the world because people are following this stuff. It's, the growth has been exponential, because it's only been really around for about 10 years, you know, as a thing, so.
Are we just, I know that we don't have an umbrella over this, have we opened them up to like a Discord?
It is on a Discord, so a lot of the coaches communicate through Discord, and that way they can talk and set stuff up outside, you know, they can, they make sure that the coaches know what's happening, they, so all the events are set up through that, and then they...
And then...
Right, and then we log into PlayVS and the students just go and...
And then the kids have access to that.
Yeah, to the game. And they have access to the whole game, they have, they have a deal with League of Legends that they have access to every character that is available, they have access to the entire Rocket League system, so they can, they don't have to feel that they are, so if you're just starting out, you still have, like, you, you have just as much of a character as somebody who's been playing for 1,000 hours.
And there's also, are there also sub-channels on that for chatting with internal?
No, so like, they, it's just, like, because obviously, we would have, like, if we were to do something like a Twitch feed or something like that, then they might set up a chat that way, like internally, and to see what's going on if people were watching it, but, you know, we could set up a Discord if we wanted to.
No, I would just...
No, I mean, I don't want to, I don't...
No, that's why I just...
I mean, but if you want one, you will...
No, 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 I, I know of things outside in the past that they've run into issues with that.
Yeah, no, so the...
And that's why I said...
Yeah, so it's only really that the, the interaction between schools is really just at the, at the coach level.
And I know you, we, again, I know this is only a club.
Yes.
So that it's just, like I said, there's, you get into that very tough situations when there's online and things like that.
Yeah, no, so this is, most of it is, like, they have no interaction between, they might have headsets that they can talk to each other, but even, even the students at the other school can't hear, so there's no, there's no interaction except for playing the game. They have no idea who's even playing.
Right, nice.
So you, you had mentioned that there were five players that had approached you, is that a total of who's going to be involved in this?
Well, so when I asked originally, I had 17 students come to a meeting and say, oh yeah, we are interested in playing esports. I have to get them back and say, okay, well, you know, if, because we, they didn't know, I bang into things, they didn't know when we were gonna be starting, so they were thinking maybe it was gonna start in the fall, and I was like, oh no, we are in the middle of the season, I'm trying to get information from you, who is interested, so I would have to then say, okay, well, we're gonna open up to registration, if you're still interested, let me know, and we will sign up everything and get, you know, do all the fees, and actually, PlayVS said, basically, you set up and create the accounts, and then they go, oh, well, you have, here's, you know, you have 12 people, here's the bill at that point.
So we'll be able to accommodate if more people here?
Yes.
That it's happening and...
Yeah, so if there were a lot of, there were more, if there was only the five people, then I would go with that. If I have seven, he said, if I have 10 people, I can basically have two teams, and so that way more and more people...
So we're not limited to the number of people that can?
No, not at all.
So intriguing to me. I can't say I have any sort of understanding, and it's over my thought process, but I'm gonna look into it.
I tried playing the game, I have no concept, I do not understand the game at all.
But I totally appreciate you doing all of this research and work and footwork for these kiddos that are going to benefit from it.
Yes.
It's, it's great, you know, it's where the kids are interested and...
Yeah, they asked me, they're like, do we have to come to the meeting? I'm like, well, if you want to. I'm like, well, if you want to, you can come. I said, well, because they came last month because we, they, we didn't know when it was happening. And so I, I, I thought it was last month and so we, I had a few students, I had a few students show up and I was like, oh, well, we'll just, I'll just go and present. And they're like, okay, so, but they were, so they were still interested.
Excellent.
And they had come up and asked me every day.
I'm sure they do.
Regularly.
They're not going to let you forget. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The only thing I, I don't know anything about this at all. I just know there's a game Fortnite that.
Oh, yes.
Kids make a fortune on that.
Yes, yes, there was a boy from Worcester who won three million dollars playing Fortnite this summer. And that is on the other, the other play system because it's a battle royale where you have a first-person shooter. So I'm trying to avoid that. So that was, but yeah, that, that is out there. There are lots of games that are interesting that people play, you know, Mortal, yeah, Mortal Kombat, they, Smash Bros., you know, they have Madden.
The MIA oversees it all.
They oversee it all.
They're actually recognizing this as a sport.
Yeah, that's.
They don't recognize cheer as a sport that's considered an activity.
Really?
And this is a sport.
I think from what we've seen, most of the safeguards are in place. I think the question we have long-term is the technology continues to evolve. So, you know, from everything we vetted on January fifteenth, we feel really comfortable. But, and Mr. Stavich, to your point, I think a little bit, what we have to make sure is that our kids are safely involved in this, that there aren't other pieces that arise that we're not aware of and we're going to have to keep on top of that. Unlike an established sport or club that has set rules, set governing bodies, set other things like that, this is, this is something that I think we'll, we'll continually all learn together about and make sure we have a high priority on student safety as we, as we move forward.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. And I'd just like to add, I wish you well.
Well, thank you.
And I thank you as well for putting this together for us.
And I'll let you know how we turn out in the spring.
Right, yeah. Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Citizens Forum, is there anyone here in attendance tonight that wishes to speak about anything on the agenda? Seeing none, I will move to our clerk for the approval of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the December fourth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting minutes. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Mrs. Demos, I'd also like to turn to you for the payroll, please.
I move the school department payroll for the period ending December twelfth, two thousand nineteen, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of one million, three hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll ending December twelfth, twenty nineteen. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well.
Mr. Chair, I move the school department payroll for the period ending December twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of one million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll ending December twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well.
Mr. Chair, I move the school department payroll for the period ending January ninth, two thousand twenty, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of one million, three hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll ending January ninth, twenty twenty. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much, Mrs. Demos.
My pleasure.
I'd like to turn to Superintendent Malone for our superintendent and staff reports at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Just a quick update to the committee in regards to the Student Opportunity Act. There's been a flurry of communication coming out from the state in regards to additional funding through Chapter Seventy reform, some pieces that we have very actively been working on. There have been guidelines set out for accountability process that comes along as part of this funding legislation where the district would have to look at an account of a three-year accountability report that would describe what they would use the additional funding for to address particularly the needs of students in subgroups, how they would engage stakeholders in the district to make some of those decisions. And it looks like that report would likely be looked at and possibly voted on by the school committee body and maybe due as early as April. So that's what we do know. Here's what we don't know. What we don't know is if any funding will be coming in the way towards Tewksbury. They believe that the predominance of the funding will go to thirty-five communities, mostly urban districts. We are not sure. Assistant Superintendent Rigan and I met today. We had a superintendent's association report and that report was, if you're not one of the thirty-five districts, don't expect anything. We've had different conversations with our legislators, a little bit more optimistic. So we had some initial projections out there that we'd let out, but none of it seems to be consistent. We have begun to engage stakeholders. We had Townwide PAC meeting on Monday night. We did an exercise and looked at, which is a good exercise regardless of getting funding or not, looked at our district strategy, our instructional priorities, asked for feedback from parents on where they see we can improve and if funding was available, where, what direction they would like to see us go in. We'd like to do a little bit more of that. That is required part of the statute, however, there is no method identified to actually establish that. We will be meeting next week in a presentation out in Marvell that both the governor and the commissioner will be presenting at to discuss this further. There is a webinar coming out of the state which will, is stating, hinting that it will give us actual money projections on January twenty-ninth. We don't know that. We've, we've had that date given to us a few times and it's not happened. So part of this is kind of pulling out of this legislation what we can get the benefit of, certainly engaging our stakeholders, setting a three-year plan, identify to meet the needs of all students, specifically focusing on some of our subgroup needs and really wrapping around this piece, which is exactly what Mr. Libby did today with the budget development, all falls into this piece. We want to continue that work. We're going to do that work anyways, whether this legislation was there or not. But we hope by our next meeting to have some concrete answers about this process, but it does have accountability pieces in it and we will have to do a report to the state regardless of the funding. So we will keep you informed on that. We got our most updated NASDAQ enrollment projections, twenty-five-year enrollment projections, very consistent with what we've seen over the past four years, stabilized growth of student enrollment with possibly a slight decline over the twenty-five-year trend, which is very consistent with what we heard from our MSBA studies, very consistent with any of our consultants we've brought in and very consistent with what NASDAQ has projected for us for the past four years. So that continues in that piece. Thank you to the parents in the Townwide PAC who met with us on Monday night. Great opportunity to interact with them and get some great information. The next Townwide PAC meeting will be April sixth. Huge thank you to the Tewksbury Wilmington Elks. Mr. Harry C., who does outstanding work with our third graders across the district. Every year presents every third grader with a personalized dictionary on behalf of the Tewksbury Wilmington Elks. And we have a nice ceremony each year, both at the Trahan and at the North Street, and they continue to be huge supporters of our district. And thank you very much to all of them. And just a reminder that Monday, January twentieth, there's no school, it's Martin Luther King Holiday. Ms. Rigan?
Thank you, Superintendent. Well, first of all, Happy New Year. Mr. Chair and members of the committee, it feels like months ago, right, that we were celebrating the new year? But during the December break, on Monday, December thirtieth, I'd like to just update you that we hosted our final Stop the Bleed training for all of our custodians and our maintenance staff. So special thank you to Detective Andre Gonzalez and our lead nurse Kelly Constantino for organizing and leading the training. At this point, as I said, now all of our staff and both educational and support staff have been trained. We will continue to host that training at the start of every new year to capture our new hires, not only in Stop the Bleed, but Alice and other emergency protocols. So again, we're very appreciative of their efforts. In your consent agenda, you'll see again the Tewksbury Public School Next Generation MCAS testing schedule as it pertains specifically to Tewks, to Tewksbury. I want to remind parents that that schedule is on our Tewksbury Public School website. You'll notice that all the testing now, including high school biology, is computer-based testing. So as the new year starts, so does our planning with our IT department and our principals to plan for the training and upload of specific data and all of those needs for the next generation testing. This week is our access testing timeframe for our English language learners. All of our English language learners of all grade levels are participating in that testing. It is much like an MCAS for English language, to gauge English language acquisition. So I want to wish all of our students well in that testing and thank all of our English language education teachers for all of the efforts that they do on behalf of those students. You've heard us talk about the TFM or the Tiered Focus Monitoring System. All ELAs or all school districts in the state of Massachusetts need to participate in the TFM process. Again, that stands for Tiered Focus Monitoring Process. It was formerly known as the CPR or the Coordinated Program Review. This process is designed to monitor our compliance and our program improvement around key standards and categories. Those three categories are special education, standards and requirements, civil rights, laws and standards, and our English language education regulations and standards. This is in total a six-year process, but with the new updates as a TFM, it, it's in two, three-year cycles. The three-year cycles are labeled either Group A or Group B. Districts start in either of those groups. Tewksbury was chosen to start as Group A. And what does that mean? In Group A, the preponderance or the focus standards are mostly in special ed with some standards in civil rights and some in ELE. Group B, which we will begin Group B Tiered Focus Monitoring in the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, the focus is on civil rights standards, some special ed standards and some ELE. It used to be in the CPR, all the standards in all three categories were the focus of the review and monitoring in total. So it really does make it a little bit more manageable. It's a, it's a daunting task, this process. It's very valuable, however, for a district to not only be in compliance, but also to grow and improve our practice. So let me just talk a minute about the Group A process we're in right now. As I said, it's a three-year cycle and it has three steps. Last year, school year eighteen, nineteen, was step one. That was our self-assessment. And that's when we took those designated standards in special ed, civil rights and English language education and we produced what's called our self-assessment, a boatload of evidence that we uploaded to the, to the state to look at. This school year, school year nineteen, twenty, we are in step two. And that is called the onsite monitoring and reporting phase. That is when DESI and the school monitoring folks come out, look at our updated evidence interview with staff, parents, some district administration, as well as some school community members. They'll have onsite interviews on February third. We'll receive a report that tells us what tier we fall in as a result of our evidence produced and as a result of those interviews. Ideally, we would love to be in tier one or two. Seventy, eighty percent of districts are expected to be in tier one or two. And there is also a tier three and four. And basically, the tier, the top tier is tier one. And, and, and what happens is they, they designate the tier based on what type of action really needs to be taken to correct any of the either compliance issues, evidence we may just didn't produce that they want to see more of, or improvements that we're making. So we're in very good shape to be in tier one or tier two right now and are getting really good feedback for the evidence we've produced. So then finally, step three, which is next school year, we will have our, if any, corrective actions in any areas of needed attention that we need to focus on as a district. Corey Steinman of the Office of the Public School Monitoring Process through DESI was here in the district last Thursday, January ninth. One requirement of the step two cycle is that we have a parent presentation informing parents of this TFM process. As I said, all districts in the Commonwealth go through this monitoring process and review. So Corey was here in this room and he illustrated what that process is like for all, all school districts. And we have posted his presentation onto the district website, so anyone that wants to see it can review the details. Also, he informed the people that were here, through our Aspen Parent Contact Data, we were able to send him a list of all of our parents of special ed students and they received a survey gizmo link to be part of the survey around those standards for special education. And anyone who may, didn't get that email with the survey link is welcome to contact Corey and his contact information is at the end of this presentation posted again on our website. So you'll hear plenty more about the TFM. Those of you who have been on the school committee for some time, you know, know we, we will pay lots of attention to what the report says. We've always corrected every action they've asked of us or provided with clarity around the information because sometimes it's just simply that. So expect to hear more. Should I break about the TFM before I proceed? Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then I'd like to talk a little bit about our, as the new year starts, a new calendar year, we start preparing for our preschool and kindergarten registrations for the upcoming school year. So next week, January twenty-first, will be an information session for preschool, parents of preschool children, the following week. I'm not going to get too deep into the weeds on the dates because all of the dates are posted on our district calendar, but let me just say this, next week, we have an information session for preschool parents. The first week of February, we'll begin registration for those parents. Kindergarten registration will begin the second week of February. February fourth will be information for kind, students who will be entering kindergarten. As I said, we post all of that information on district website, there's lots of details. We are changing the registration for kindergarten slightly this year, so I just want to say it as often as I can. It was typical in the past that parents of kindergarten entrance-age students would go to their respective early childhood school, the Dewing or Heathrow. This school year, we'll be scheduling all kindergarten student registrations through the Director of Student and Family Support at the center school. Parents will have a designated timeframe to come and get one-on-one guidance through the kindergarten registration. So we're really excited about that improvement to the kindergarten registration. And that concludes my update for tonight.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Rigan.
You're welcome.
Dave, I think you presented somewhat thorough report earlier.
I think I will be in touch with my.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the board?
A motion to approve consent agenda.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. Committee reports, we're going to start with Mr. Cutlass in the Elementary School Building Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're still working quite diligently, the contractor, the architect and project manager with our administration and staff and the committee. Tomorrow night, we have a meeting. Hopefully, we're going to submit sixty percent design documents to the MSBA. There was a little delay over the holidays with that. It was going to be late December, but now it'll be in early January. We anticipated starting work in January, that might not begin until the beginning of March now as a result of the permitting process, extension on the permitting process. One piece of good news is, I think tomorrow night, we might approve release of the site work package, which has come in under budget. And that's pretty good at this particular time and date. That's not a. That's not to mean all the project's going to come under budget, but that's a big piece of it, and that would be very good for our district if that does happen. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Moving on to Mrs. Demos for the Tewksbury Education Foundation.
So the Tewksbury Education Foundation's met once. We're eager and willing to have some new members and some new ideas join the foundation. We've had the same members for quite some time now, and a lot of the members have children who have either already graduated from the system or will be graduating this year. And so we welcome some new family and some new ideas. If you're interested and want to know a little bit more about the foundation, my email is up on the website. I'd be glad to answer any questions or hear some ideas and welcome you to the organization, the foundation.
Great. Thank you very much, Mrs. Demos. The Tewksbury CPAC, I'm very happy to announce they're having a meeting right here tomorrow night at seven o'clock. You can always come early to meet some of the people in the district. And it's my understanding that the Director of Student Services is going to be presenting our programming, special education programming. So that will be an excellent opportunity for members of the community to come down and see all the things that are going on in our special education department. And now I'm going to turn to Mr. Stappmann for our wellness committee report, please.
No major updates over the holiday. We do have a meeting scheduled here, March 16th at 3:30. Again, that's in this room, March 16th, 3:30.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Stappmann. Seeing no policy changes, proposals, or adoptions this evening, we're going to move on to old business. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Reagan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first article here in old business you'll see is our workshop schedule for this Friday, January 17th. I'd like to remind parents that this Friday, January 17th, is an early release day for all students. Teachers will be participating in their workshop schedule in the afternoon. The next article in old business is informational only. I was not here at the last school committee meeting. As you know, I was at the annual case conference together with Principal Vogel, Principal McGinnis, and Principal Chenanovich. I look forward to this conference every year as it really focuses primarily on key instructional strategies and professional practices to improve student learning for all, especially our struggling learners. One best practice and one best presentation that we all agree and saw was Jenny Donahue. I hope you had a little bit of time to look at these two documents. Her presentation focused on what's called collective efficacy, which is directly reflective of our number-one professional development and professional practice goal in the district, which is our PLC, focus groups and our PLC facilitation. So what is collective efficacy? It refers to a staff's shared belief that through their collective action, through reviewing and looking over that instructional cycle, they can positively influence student outcomes, especially including those that are disengaged or disadvantaged. So we're really pleased to tell you, actually, before I go on with that, if you look at the second page here, John Hattie's latest visible learning research. Anyone in education has heard of John Hattie. This is research we hold very near and dear and look at often as what is the most number-one influence related to student achievement. You can see at the top of the chart, collective teacher efficacy is the single highest influence on affecting student achievement. If you look down, it gave you some information. Ideally, we look for influences over a point-four effect. A point-four effect or influence on achievement would be a year's growth in a year. So anything above a point-four will accelerate learning for students. If you look at collective teacher efficacy, it ranks number-one at a 1.57. So now, knowing that, Jenny Donahue, who's an expert in collective teacher efficacy, has agreed to contract with Tewksbury Public Schools next year for a portion of our PD program. So I have to thank you for supporting our involvement in conferences like the case conference because each year, we have brought back amazing presenters to Tewksbury. And I believe that are going to improve our student learning as we get better and better at what we do. So I thought you should know that. It's money well spent, and we have an expert coming to work with our, not only district leadership team, but a group of our teacher leaders.
Agreed.
Okay. And then finally, in old business, this is informational only as well. I've given you just a sample of how we review our curriculum resources for bias. There are seven forms of bias that students and staff and parents may see within curricular resources. We pay particular focus on this when we're looking at new resources. However, as a regulation and requirement of civil rights standards, we need to monitor and review our current and older curricular resources for bias. And this is becoming more and more focus of the civil rights law. So what we have just begun to implement is a process to do that within our staff and within our schools. What we also realize we need is a venue for parents and students to report perceived feelings of bias within the resources they're using in class. We have a long way to go in implementing this, but we have posted this form to the district website so that in the meantime, as we train our teachers, as we train our department heads, and our students to use these resources, we have something online to point to in case we get calls about that. So you'll hear more about that. It goes hand in hand with our TFM monitoring process, and it helps us improve our programming.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Reagan.
You're welcome.
Moving on to new business. I see we have the school calendar draft.
Well, I'll take that one as well, Mr. Chairman. This is the first draft, again with January 1st passed. We look at the calendar for the next school year. This is our first draft, and in front of you is only the days of the school year. You notice there is no backside because as we have our first draft, and I, you know, it would be remiss of me not to thank Ms. Gail Johnson because she spends an exorbitant amount of time just really fleshing out every single day and multicultural holidays and making sure that the calendar does not impede upon any of those. This is the first draft of that. You'll notice we have a very late Labor Day, every seven years or so. We have a very late Labor Day, the first Monday of September, and it falls as late as it ever will on September 7th in 2020. So that means we start the school year very late in comparison to our typical third to week of August. So if we now fill in all the PD days and all of the holidays and all of the school vacations, you'll see with our five snow days, we're ending very late in June. It's a little stressful thinking about going that late. But it's important to note that we do have, you know, collective bargaining agreements within many of our units, unions, and particularly with our TTA union, that we may not start the school year any sooner than the Monday before Labor Day. So we're certainly open for discussion whether we, you know, go a couple of days earlier than that with our collective bargaining units. But at this point, given the language that we have, given the holiday where it falls, this is the first draft of our school calendar for the next school year. No vote is needed at this time. I think we probably want you to see that this is where we are, and then we'll continue that discussion.
Just one question, Mrs. Reagan. Aren't we at that first Monday with the 31st? Or do you mean the first Monday for students?
We could not go any earlier than the 31st based on the language we have in our current contract.
Correct, okay.
For teachers.
Okay. So this is starting it as early as possible?
It is.
Okay. I just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Ms. Reagan, was there any thoughts maybe into, I noticed that we have four of the full-day professional development days, as well as four early dismissals for teacher workshops? You know, I know that the 31st and the first, the August 31st and the first of September, doesn't make any sense to include those, but the other two full days, if we're looking to get ourselves some days accounted for, maybe making those half-day workshop days?
Or making them later in the year. We could cert, you know, more on those last days of June. I think we have a little bit of discussion to do with all of our units.
I'm just thinking if those could be flexible where they go in the calendar versus, you know, being so early in the school year, we could kind of see and play out what our weather looks like in that winter, if we have a light winter or, you know.
Those are certainly some of the thoughts that we are exploring, but keeping in mind that we do front-load the PD because generally, they align with the goals that the district has.
I know we need to meet them. Yeah, I know. Just looking at the 25th, a little bit tight.
And it may, and you have a big snow year, it could even be tighter.
Right.
We know that.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I think, again, this is the first version of this calendar. There are important dates that we do start to need to mark, like graduation date, things like that, that parents want to know about. But you'll expect to hear more from us on the calendar.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, on the annual Ginsberg Family Award, this is a great event we partake in every year. Huge thank you to the Ginsberg family for sponsoring this award. I spoke with Mr. Mark Ginsberg a couple weeks ago, just to make sure we were all set on some of the dates and his interest. Terrific supporter of Tewksbury Public Schools. And just to remind the public that we are seeking nominations for the annual Ginsberg Family Award that was established in 2013 to recognize an individual, a group, a company, organization, who has had a significant impact in Tewksbury Public Schools in the area of physical, monetary, tangible contributions, or voluntary for the benefit of the school or the district. And we've just had some terrific past winners, and it's just a great symbol to this community in their support to education. Timelines that are out there, nominations are open as of today. The final deadline for nominations are February 5th. We have it going out over multiple mediums, and we'll be emailing some elements out. So if you certainly want to nominate someone for this prestigious award, please do so. Mr. Ginsberg, myself, and representative from the school committee, sit down and look at those nominations and make a final determination that will be presented here at a future school committee meeting.
Great. And just to follow up on that, another thank you on behalf of the school committee to the Ginsberg family for all they do. And not just them, but, you know, I think Donna Stonics was in here last year, and they were last year's recipient. We're very blessed in Tewksbury to have so many people that give back, and this award is, to me, just so very appropriate to make sure that we're doing this. So thank you for that, Mr. Malone. And moving on to our superintendent's mid-year review, I'll do that at this time. The mid-year review gives the school committee the opportunity to reflect on the superintendent's goal-setting for our students, staff, and school facilities. A formal evaluation of the superintendent encompassing the six areas of district standards will also be completed in June or July of 2020. Mr. Malone is in his fourth year as the superintendent of Tewksbury Public Schools. In that capacity, he continues to exhibit strong leadership skills, which we feel is a benefit to the district. Performance indicators include continued focus on improving student achievement and outcomes for all learners, continues to develop district-level and building-level leaders through collaborative problem-solving and systems development while prioritizing their impact on student achievement. Continue to evaluate the district's strategy, leadership of the elementary school building project as we begin construction, managing the day-to-day operations of our district, and continuing to implement a long-range capital plan which addresses infrastructure and staff needs. As we move forward as a district, areas of concentration for the superintendent should include focusing on improvement in student achievement and outcomes for all learners, oversight of the elementary building school during construction while minimizing the impact on our current students that are being housed at the Ryan School, develop a physically sound budget that continues to address all our district needs, enhance our community services preschool programming, continued implementation of new security measures throughout our district, continue to evaluate and implement capital improvements in the district, and continue to work on enhancing relationships with district personnel and student families. Throughout his tenures, his tenure as superintendent, we find Mr. Malone to be approachable, professional, and consistent in his dealings with the school committee, school staff, students, and community members. We also recognize and appreciate his sincere commitment to the district and its consistent work towards improving academic achievement and outcomes for all our students. Thank you, Mr. Malone. Just so the public knows, that is a document that the five of us collaborated on. And as I said, I think it's by statute or regulation, Mr. Malone, every June or July, we will have your formal assessment for you. So I thank you for all the hard work that you put in. I'm a firm believer, we can always do more, and we can always be better. And I know that you share that same goal, so I appreciate all that you do, and let's keep working hard for our students and moving this district forward. So thank you again. All right. I have school committee matters of interest, and I'm going to start with you, Mrs. Demos.
I just recently attended the selectmen's meeting for the budget the other night, and I just wanted to mention that how I truly appreciated the true collaboration amongst the town and the school that we have here in Tewksbury. It has not always been the case, and I think that our leaders, our elected officials, should be commended for their fine efforts. I think that the residents and the students in Tewksbury benefit from this true collaboration. You know, one example I remember hearing about the other night was the DPW and the school maintenance facility sharing the same space. You know, why not? It's all for the same, you know, people and out of the same taxes. It really just kind of stuck into my mind that we've come a long way, that, you know, we didn't always have that here. And I just think that people should be commended because there's a lot of time put into this that we don't necessarily see, that is, really should be commended. I also attended a meeting the other night here at the high school for what is being offered for the seniors at our high school for a senior project. It was quite eye-opening. It's the first for me. And boy, I think no matter what the students' postgraduate plans are, there's a little bit of something for everyone with this. But again, you know, we had, Mr. O'Leary was there, Mr. Guthro, all the advisors that are putting in all this time and effort to guide these students into what really kind of makes a great fit for them. Also, it's something that is new to me, and I thought this is a great opportunity for these students up here at the high school. They really kind of tailor it to meet the needs of every one of the kids, and, you know, that's what it's all about, you know. But those two meetings really kind of had a great impact on me, and I thought, you know, this is a good place to be. We're going in a great direction, and, you know, it's something to be proud of. So I know that we've had a long meeting tonight, so that's all I have for you today.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Cutlass?
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
I just want to, I didn't, I forgot to do it at the beginning when, at the outset, I thought the presentation from Mr. Libby was outstanding, and, you know, I also appreciated, obviously, the collaboration between you and the town. And, you know, we got the budget presentation from, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but, you know, it's just, it's fun. It's nice when it's that easy to read and understand, and you can follow through it. And Dave, you made this really easy for us tonight, so thank you for that. And that's all I have.
Great. Mr. Stappmann?
So on the news of budget and more digging, if you will, I'd like to, I know this is kind of an odd little tweak, if you will, but obviously, that it's kind of a matter of interest to myself. I know that, you know, facilities are kind of a, you know, kind of a thing with myself. And having something like a roof, you know, with the Ryan and the Dewing, obviously being on there, you know, needing a roof. And, you know, having them pushed off, if you will, I know that that always doesn't rise to the top. And I know that, you know, the town manager said, you know, keep things at a level loading, if you will. You know, it's obviously tough to do. So that, you know, a capital outlay project, you know, when all the, everything shakes out and things like that, so you're limited to, let's say, you know, half a million dollars, whatever the number is, if you will. You know, when you're looking at last year's numbers, I know that you had presented to us, you know, the Ryan was somewhere around 300, you know, 3 million, and the Dewing, somewhere around two, so if you will. And again, I know, you know, those are rough numbers and things like that. And I know this is a, you know, this is a tough time for everyone, being at the end of a meeting and stuff like that. You know, earlier, we're kind of chatting over here. You know, earlier, we're kind of chatting over here. But for this board's consideration, you know, in order to get it on the warrant meeting the town, and again, those two things, since this is a town issue, you know, and being such a large amount of money, and, you know, I would like to propose a warrant article be issued to be appropriate and raise to upwards of $5 million, give or take, for place refurbishment of the Doing School and Ryan School, to be issued at the town meeting, or at the, for an article notice. Warrant article. There you go. For the benefit of the schools. Because again, I think it, you know, it goes, you know, not for, it just seems that we keep pushing this off, pushing this off, pushing this off. And like I said, it's been, you know, at least two to three years in my eyes. And it doesn't seem that we're going to get that large chunk of money. You know, and again, for the board's consideration, and I know it's at the end of the meeting, to hear a number like that.
Sure. I just think, sure.
No, no, no. I think we should, someone, either yourself or Mr. Libby, Mr. Malone should discuss that with the town manager to see how it fits into his capital plan.
I mean, this is a, this is a, you know, somebody needs to vote on this on a town level as well. I mean, obviously, for, you know, being that we've appropriated all this additional monies for, you know, the new school and things like that. I mean, this is a, this is a direct impact for the taxpayer as well. You know, that, you know, whatever the 3% raise for the taxpayer, I mean, again, you know, I just feel that, you know, we're investing in a new school, you know, but we need to keep infrastructure going. And if it doesn't rise to the top, I don't think that, you know, we can, again, push off anymore.
I'm in favor of it. I think we should discuss it with him because I know he's going to finance the DPW joint maintenance building within the budget, and that's $25 million. It's not every year, but I mean, I just think he.
And I just would like to add, John, I'm not sure what the process is for a warrant article.
Right.
Right off the bat. Mr. Malone, I'm not sure you are.
So typically, we would coordinate with the town manager, and typically, he would have an idea of what the likelihood of having availability for a warrant article at all would be, and then would ask us to look at our needs. There is also the process of an accelerated repair, a lengthy process, and all those of us in an MSBA process know right now, know that's, you know, that is a significant lift to get through that process, but it can get you a significant reimbursement on an accelerated repair review. We do have the town engineer that's been contracted by the town doing some more specific cost estimates, because I agree with Mrs. Stadman, that we have some ballpark numbers here. It'd be great to get some more specific numbers and make that determination. But I would certainly defer to the board as far as how they would like to proceed on an element like that and look at, you know, how that fits in with other things that are going on in the town, other aspects between the elementary school building project and DPW facility. Certainly, we want to make sure we're on a maintenance program. One of the reasons we need a new elementary school building is, you know, I'm not sure the finances were ever there to have a long-term plan like Mrs. Stadman's talking about. And that's, and that's, that's a priority, and that will make us, that will save us money in the long run. Figuring out the timing of that, figuring, figure out when that's appropriate, I would certainly defer to the committee on that piece.
Maybe, Mr. Malone and Mr. Stadman, we could table this discussion, put an agenda item at the next meeting, so we could get input from a lot of the other stakeholders.
Right. My main concern is that, you know, as far as the warrant goes, you know, the timing. Again, I'm not sure.
I think for May, you have a little more time, at least until the end of February for the May.
So, yeah, and I had a couple of questions just on, like, you know, how urgent the repairs are, where does it fall? You know, I know that we have a pretty lengthy capital project list, but where does it fall in your priorities in terms of, like, which ones are the hottest priorities, or which ones are the most important?
I think, you know, the roofs are always a priority because when they fail, it's devastating.
Right. It's, now it's immediate.
Certainly at the doing, we're at the lifespan of the roof.
Okay.
In any of our schools, our K4s, when it rains, we chase leaks. We've done some significant work at the Heathbrook that we've seen some significant results from with a 10-year warranty, two-tiered, over two years, repair and sealant. The doing is at at least 25 years. You know, we're getting to that point with the Ryan where the elements of that building and how and when it was commissioned, the specs on how it was commissioned have probably changed since then. So it's certainly time, you know, to look at that. The Heathbrook in itself, I, you know, we've, we've made some progress with that building in the past couple of years that is likely going to be a building that is going to be costly to maintain. Whether we move into windows next, we look at, we just put a new boiler in, mainly because we had to, you know, whether there's appropriate ways to look at the HVAC system further on, how much, and we all have to ask ourselves, you know, how much do you project, how long do you project utilizing that building before you have to either engage in a renovation or another building project? And project out, let's project out 10 years. By that point, you're going to be developing, determining what's going on at the wind, what's going on at the Ryan shortly after. So it's kind of a never-ending phase, and I think to Mr. Stadman's point is, you know, it's better to have forethought on some of these issues than than wait for the repairs. I mean, when there are some things, we have leaks at the North Street, we have leaks at the Dran. We have a new building come up. We address them, we repair them, but we're repairing them so that we can, you know, make sure it's safe and dry. At the Heathbrook, we're trying to do a little bit higher level. It's not a brand-new roof. At some of these buildings, likely, we're going to have to look at a new roof at some point. And if it's not putting in a new roof, it's certainly having the forethought to think about, how are we going to budget this? How are we going to prepare for this over the next few years?
So I mean, I just, I'll offer my two cents, which is, you know, I think it's a good idea to table this, since we do have time to get it on the warrant, and then let's get some of those facts so that we're fully informed and ready to, like, say, you know, we want to push for this, we don't want to push for this, you know, we're going to wait. There are a lot of options.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Just so that I want the committee informed. And I did just research what the deadline is for the May 2020 town meeting.
Thank you.
And the warrants were open December 18th, 2019, through January 31st, 2020. So I don't know the process by which this committee, I'm unaware as well, but I.
I think the manager has more time to submit articles later than that date, if he wants to, if we agree and everything like that. I think he can do it.
Well, we could also call for, we could also call for a meeting before the end of the month if that.
If need be.
If need be, yeah.
You know, with some more facts.
Sure.
And I, in fact, this morning in my meeting with John Marchand, asked them to get the folks who did the Heathbrook roof coating to get us an estimate on the Ryan School, which is, it's just basically a square foot projection. He said he would do that for us. That product, we did one-third of the roof last summer, so we've had a whole season to see how that has worked. No leaks. We did the other two-thirds of the roof this summer, so we haven't really had a whole, you know, freezing and thawing season to go through yet. But so far, no leaks. So that's an option that we could, we could price out pretty quickly, and it's something we could consider. It's a 10-year warranty, and extend the life of the roof in that way. So that's another potential option we could, we could consider.
All right. So just wrapping up. So what is the pleasure of the board at this thing?
I would like to see us table it, and if necessary, for us to come back before the end of the month, because we have to have it written, and then let's do that. We'll just have a meeting where we add a couple of items, and otherwise, you know, we'll add it to the agenda for next month. That would, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Okay.
I'll second that. And we could reach out to Mr. Montori in between that.
I was just going to say, I would like to see some, one of us touch base with Mr. Montori, and I'd also be curious to get those quotes from Dave on the sealant versus the replacement.
Yep. Okay.
I'll reach out since I made the motion.
There you go.
Okay. And I'll be more than happy if you would like me to go see Mr. Montori with you. I'd be more than happy to do that.
Sure.
So I have a motion in a second to table the discussion.
Unless there's a deadline.
Table the discussion. Scott, want to just?
To the call of the chair.
I'm sorry. To table the discussion until next month's meeting, unless there's a deadline which requires us to meet this month.
Oh, next month.
With the warrant submission, it's been somewhat of an informal process from the school department to the town manager. Typically, that process is, we've talked on the committee about what the needs were and what the potential warrant piece typically, if it moves that far, and the town manager is in agreement with the need, and he thinks it's a good idea, and he thinks there's likely funds available, then it would probably get down to the level where he would talk with Dave to get the exact wording on the warrant.
Okay.
You know, typically, that conversation might start off with, hey, we're thinking about a roof. And then it starts boiling down to, and it gets down to numbers, and then it gets down to the description of the warrant article and everything like that. That, and that, that description of a warrant article may look, take three months to finalize what it exactly looks like.
All right. So I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. Unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Stadman. We're on to future school committee and subcommittee meetings. The next public meeting will be February 12, 2020. It will be our next public budget hearing at 6:30 with the regular meeting at 7 o'clock. And March 18, 2020, will be a public hearing, number three, at 6:30 with our regular meeting at 7 p.m. Is there anyone that has any future agenda items? As always, if someone from the public does, they can contact anyone on the school committee or Mr. Malone. And my school committee matters of interest, I would just like to wish our 31-deck of students that are going to be competing in a couple of weeks at the Deck of States, good luck. That's a great organization and a great program. So good luck to all those students, and good evening. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
A second. I have a motion and a second. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. All those in favor of adjourned? Aye. Chair votes aye as well. Thank you.